Good evening. I call to order this work session of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday evening, June 25th, 2024. It's 5:30 PM. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using Zoom platform. However, at work sessions, we generally do not take public comments, so I don't expect that we'll have people commenting online. The public is welcome to attend the work session in person or online. Tammy, will you call the order, please? Or call the roll, please. I'm sorry.
Councillor Huckabee.
Present.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Blow, Blow, excuse me.
Blau.
Blau. Blau. My apologies.
Present.
Councillor Cook.
Present.
Councillor Roberts.
Present.
Councillor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. The purpose of tonight's work session is to get a mid-year update on work goals and work plans from our various supportive advisory teams and committees. And so we have chairs and, in some cases, vice chairs and staff and some members of those committees here tonight. We'll hear from them one by one. Staff, do you have any other introductory statements to make?
Nope. I think we're going to go ahead and start with our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And tonight you will have Chair Nancy Turner and Public Works Director Darren Canaparoli give you a brief update of what they've been working on for the past six months.
Very good. Come have a seat at the front. Push the button and the microphone will stay on. It might be best to aim the microphone itself toward the person who's speaking at that time.
Okay. Hi. This is, I'm Nancy Turner and I'm the chairperson of the Parks and Rec Board. Thank you for letting us come and bring this up. Our first goal was to make improvements in the Robin Hood Park, which is a really tiny little pocket park up in the Nottingham neighborhood. We had done a public outreach to that neighborhood and the big thing they wanted was a swing. So the swings were installed this past week and the wood chips are up there. So the swings are operable. Concrete.
Yeah, so there'll be some park amenities going up there, a picnic table, which currently is not there, replacing a bench and then also replacing the garbage can to the new standards that the Parks Board has set. Concrete's going to be poured there within the next couple of weeks for that. Once that's done, we'll get those amenities installed.
And I noticed today when I drove by that the basketball hoop actually had a net on it. So whether a community member did that or whether that was from Public Works, I don't know. But that park was looking really good. So. Our second goal was improvements at Meldrum Bar Park. And thanks to the council for voting some ARPA funds, there is a new play structure down at Meldrum Park that was dedicated on February 28th. We're also looking for grant funding to finance a fenced dog park down there. And that Meldrum is also on the list for improvements from the Metro money that's coming to Gladstone. So eventually there'll be some improvements from that fund. Okay. Our third goal was to install a secondary loop walking trail at the Gladstone Nature Park. We preferred that it be paved and that it connect up with the paved path that's there now so that it was totally accessible for someone who needed a paved path. We went out for grants to try and fund that. We were awarded one through the state and it got a little complicated. We needed to go out for a cultural and archaeological evaluation and that has now been done and that paperwork has been submitted to the state.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And we're waiting for them now to release the funds. This was a grant through the state parks. So we're waiting for those funds to come to us so we can start on that. I sense he wants to.
Yeah, so we're hoping to start design on that trail in fall. We're probably a little more than a month out before everything gets to the state. And then the plan will be to do construction of the trail in the summer of 2025.
The nature park also is slotted for a bathroom and a shelter attached to that through our Metro funding that we're going to be getting. So there's going to be a lot of changes and really wonderful improvements up at the nature park within the next year, year and a half. So stay tuned for that. The third one is the Ridge Gate property or the David M. Scott property, where this was the only park in Gladstone that didn't have any signage to say that it was a city park and the name of the park. So that was one of our goals was to do that. And we do have a couple of benches to put up there. But at the current time, there's a meeting scheduled for July 19th to meet with a neighborhood coalition to kind of talk about the park and what they see would be appropriate to put in the park and where it should go. So that'll be on July 19th and we'll try and move ahead with a plan after that and get Ridge Gate up and going. The next goal is to complete the Highway 99E crossing trail from Doll Beach to Charles Ames Park. And if you kind of stop and think about that, that goes from Doll Beach under McLaughlin, kind of comes up next to the Black Rock Coffee. It's Black Rock? Yeah. And then into the parking lot there and then connects up with the rest of that trail. So right now there is a very casual foot trail that goes through there, but this would be a more formal trail. They, the city has also gone out for grant funding to try and be able to get the funds to do that. So unless you know something more than that.
No, we're currently working with Metro. That is one of their trails that they have in their master plan. So we're currently working with them to try to get funding for that. First step would be design and then after that would be construction, but we don't really have a timeline on that yet.
The next one is to rezone the nature park as open space for the master plan. And according to Darren, that's slotted for sometime this fall, September.
September council meeting.
And then that will be taken care of. So another goal. The last of our big goals was to do some improvements in the Nick Shannon Park. I think every old piece of play equipment went to Nick Shannon. It reminds me of one that I grew up with, the metal that, you know, somebody always fell off of at the beginning of the summer. But anyway, so that park really needs some attention. And that, we're just now kind of starting that discussion. For sure, we'll go out with some sort of a public input component to that to see what the neighborhood wants. I know the board has some ideas on what we'd like to see there, but we also need to acknowledge that the community right there also knows what they want. So we'll do that. So that's, that's where we are with that one. We do have three goals down at the bottom, which are curious to me. They've been there and they've been carried over several times. So one of our goals this past year has been to kind of really look at those three goals and decide, you know, are they valid? Do we need to keep them? What can we do with them? So the first one of those is to research and implement park user fees, specific to rental of covered park structures and reservation in the city parks. And at this point, we talked about it and thought that the the covered areas that we have are not enough that we would generate enough money to make it worth staff time. So at this point, I think that's kind of a mute, a mute point. We also did spend some time just looking at other user fees in the city. And so the board understands what those are. And so that's where we are with that goal. The next one is to community partner on events that maintain citizen involvement and consider ways to make the process more user-friendly to encourage event partnership. I think that's pretty much a goal across everybody's agenda to try and get more events going on. We haven't really talked about that one yet. So that's still to look at. We're, we've also asked for, the last goal is to research the recreational programming that could be linked to the transient lodging tax. And I think most people on the board know what that tax is because we pay it. But we've not, we don't know how it works on the other end of it, trying to access those funds and how they're currently being used. So we've asked for some information for someone to come talk to the board and explain that to us so that we are all kind of on the same group of information, like what is it? How does it work? How do we access it? Is it something that's even, that the Parks Board should be using or perhaps another advisory board could be looking at those funds? So that's one we're, I really like to get that one done before the end of the year.
And actually, there may be some confusion over that. That's not a tax that you would be paying unless you were staying in a hotel here in Gladstone.
Right. Yeah, that's what I meant. I mean, I think we all, whenever we travel, we pay it.
Right, right.
And we know that, but I have no idea how it comes to the city and sometimes getting money back. And using money is a lot harder to do than giving it. So that was what my comment meant.
Well, good. And now that we have on staff, you know, a business and tourism staff person, we're more in touch from the, from the staff level with that tax coming in and what it can and can't be used for. So we'll be able to provide you with that information to help guide your decisions on this or your recommendation.
Yeah, great. That's, I mean, I think that's what we need to know and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the staff's expertise on that.
And as far as community partnering on events, just last weekend, we had the Juneteenth event. Or yes, weekend before last, at Max Patterson Park. And that was a great partnership. The facilities and the amenities of that park were perfect for the type of event that a community group wanted to have. And the city had set up some, a good procedure for groups requesting to use it. So it goes beyond the festival in August to now where we will hopefully be seeing more groups want to do things, some of them on park property. So I'm glad you still have that on your list. You still see the need to make those parks available to groups that want to do this.
Yep.
Are there questions or comments from council members? Councillor Garlington?
A couple of questions. When you were talking about the Nick Shannon improvements, what was the final cost of the Meldrum Bar play structure? Is that the kind of dollars we're talking about?
Yes. I think the final dollar amount for that was somewhere around $100,000, maybe a little bit more. This one will probably end up costing more just because it has a sand fall zone in it and it really needs to be replaced with wood chips. So there'll be a lot more dig out and stuff like that that'll go along with it. But that's in the dollar amount range that we'll be looking at.
Okay. And that's not West funding? That would just be SDCs could maybe pay for that or?
Possibly.
Somewhere.
Possibly, or come out of capital as well.
Okay. The park user fees, we've been talking about that for a long time because that was there when I was there and that's been three and a half years ago. So I feel you there. And then the meeting on July 19th, is that your meeting, your regular meeting? Or you're invited to a meeting or what's?
So we set up a meeting with the property owners of, up on, what's the name of that? Ridge Gate. And we're looking to install some amenities there. And we want to get their input on location of where things should go or even if they, they are going to go at all. So. And then the other portion of that is, like Nancy said, putting in a sign there to, you know, because it is a city park and it currently has no signage at all. So that really the meetings with the property owners to feel them out, see where they're at as far as getting some of that stuff taken care of.
And where is that happening?
It'll happen on site.
Okay.
And it's myself, the Public Works Director, Chair Turner and Vice Chair Cornelius. So it's not the entire Parks Board meeting on site out there.
Okay. It's my neighborhood. And then, yeah, I have to echo what you said about the community partnerships. I mean, I feel like we're really getting in the groove of starting to use our parks for a lot of great things. And I cannot wait for people to volunteer to have more events.
Yeah, I just had a question. So, because I've been approached by people and I have got on Redland Road, I've seen two people that have bought, what do we do with our old equipment? Like you gotta get new playground structure. The old one, can we resell it, recover any money? I mean, do donate, can you get a write-off? I mean, because I know people that have bought from Parks and Redmond, they got nice things at their home that they, so they bought it from the city, the used one.
Yeah, so the one at Nick Shannon is well beyond its lifespan. It's, it's really in pretty bad shape and you don't really see play structures like that anymore with all the metal and everything like that. So that one will probably end up being scrapped.
The Meldrum Bar one that we took out to replace with the Nick?
That one was also scrapped. There's, with that type of equipment, there's usually only a, there's a lifespan on it. And once you reach that lifespan, it really needs to be decommissioned or, you know, destroyed or salvaged, not salvaged, but recycled. Thank you.
Okay. So you don't get a scrap price or nothing. We get nothing. We recover no money for the used.
No. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Cook?
Yeah, and I, I know that you had mentioned that you're not quite sure, you know, that the park user fees had kind of been kicked down over time. Do we know if the, if that was originally on the agenda because we were looking at that as a, as a potential revenue source or as a service to residents? Do we know why that was on there?
I believe that originated back when we were, the Parks Board was researching all kinds of potential revenue sources for parks. And then ultimately we decided to implement the parking fee at Meldrum Bar Park. The user fee, when you look at what the administrative costs for that, it didn't pencil out for us to move forward with it. But I think it originated back because everything was on the table when we were trying to figure out how to get more revenue from our park system.
Got it. The reason, the reason I ask is because I have two school-aged children who have birthdays in the summertime. And it's a common concern that I hear from other parents as well is that it's difficult to have a reserved space for a birthday party. So what ends up happening is people camp out at five in the morning. I hopped to doing this last year to make sure that they have a covered space for a child's birthday party. But then that ends, ends up with a ton of stress, like you're telling people to come to this location. You don't know if you actually have that location. And then I think what ends up happening too is then we lose some of that functionality of those coverage structures because, for example, if I'm like throwing my kid's birthday party in the morning, nobody can plan that in the afternoon because they don't know if I'm gone yet or not. So even if it's revenue neutral, I would just throw it out there that I think having the ability to schedule time for those covered rentals would still be a service addition to residents, even if it's not a revenue draw for the city.
Councillor Garlington?
So when we first talked about it, the other part of that is that we had some West funds that we were looking to spend. And one of the things that we wanted was a more covered areas down at Meldrum Bar, which West money could be spent down there because it's river access. And so that's where that came up. And I agree with you wholeheartedly because if your birthday party's not till three o'clock and you've got your brother-in-law camped out down there at 7:00 AM, 6:00 AM, 5:00 AM, they're, and they're just sitting on the table all day long waiting for this child's birthday party to come, where, you know, maybe, maybe we could even try something like a signup board out of good faith. Who knows? And I can potentially see the issues, but at the same time, I feel for you. I hear what you're saying. It's hard.
Anyone else? Well, this was timely. I think that Nancy, you and I are from the same generation. I remember that kind of equipment and the merry-go-rounds and all that stuff that they have at Nick Shannon. I just commented, responded to a comment on public, on social media today from a parent who was asking about that, who lives in the neighborhood. It is a wonderful neighborhood park. It doesn't even have a restroom because everyone's homes are so close. The kids can come and go and feel safe and they're watched by their neighbors. But this parent's comment was with the sand, they have to take a shower every time they come over the park because they get so dirty. So I'm glad you're sensitive to that, to the safety of what a new generation of park equipment really requires, the wood chips. And I hope that we'll be able to pinpoint some revenue sources to be able to, to make those changes because I think the residents of the community would genuinely appreciate it. So thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you for your emphasis on community engagement and making these decisions. The people who live close to the parks or the people who use them the most will, will definitely appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have staff and advisory board chair for our community center. So Mindy Prosky and Programs Coordinator Michelle Prusso.
And while they're getting ready, I also wanted to recognize that Roxanne McMullin and Sylvia Kellner are here, who are also on the Community Center Advisory Board, and the liaison is Councillor Huckabee.
Thank you very much to you both for coming tonight and we appreciate the work that your committee does. I watched your most recent meeting and I like the, again, the engagement of the, of the board members in making decisions and thinking about things that will improve the, the work of that, of that group and that facility in our community. And Councillor Huckabee, thank you for serving as a liaison. All right. You're welcome to make your presentation.
Mayor, councilors, thank you so much for having us at your work session today. So we are here to just go over a few things that, that we have accomplished and that we are still working on for our work plan for the calendar year of 2024. Number one was expand multi-generational classes at the Gladstone Community Center. Do you want to speak a little bit more to that, Michelle?
Yeah, I'm sure you guys get the colorful little packets each month that talks about everything that we're doing, multi-generational. So you know about our PIMPEL programs, fourth and fifth graders coming to lunch, we do field trips. We have, you know, kids from the preschool we invite over. So we have all that going on. But we've also expanded to summer hours, having a craft hour. That's all ages for parents to bring in their kids if they want to use the facility. Since you guys were touching on the park use, I would like to put in there as well that I feel like the multi-generational portion of that is really with our, our markets that we've been doing and our music on the greens as well. I feel like that really brings in the full spectrum of the community. You know, everyone attends those from small children to our seniors. And what else? We have a lot going on. Trying to think of it all. Can you think of anything else?
No, I think that's, like Michelle said, the, the rebranding, which is number two, identify a new brand and logo for the Gladstone Community Center to coincide with the city of Gladstone's new branding guidelines, which you can see. That is our, our new logo. With the changeover of the, the center from solely a senior center to a community center, we're still in the, the new stage of that. It has been maybe a year. A lot of people still don't know that we actually have a community center in Gladstone. It's going to take some time, but like Michelle was saying, with the, the different outreach that is going on and the different events, the music on the greens, especially partnering with the Oak Lodge Rotary to do some of the music on the greens with their movie night at Max Patterson is going to be really great. We're going to have a table, of course, at the Gladstone Community Festival, which is going to have our new name and our new logo. So we're really getting there. And so the more that we have, you know, new, new branding, the more people are going to start to think about it and, and realize that we have a really great community center in, in our community. So number three was to apply for grant funds to develop a master site plan for the Gladstone Community Center. And I don't actually have a lot of details on that.
So the, the city did submit a grant request to Clackamas County. We should know later this summer whether or not we will receive that. And basically what the notion of this is, is that it, the building is, is functional, but we would like to have a master site developed to, to determine whether or not we want to expand the facilities or redesign the interior of it. This would be a multi-year process to do that and we'd have to identify funding for that. But if you take a holistic look in the city, we rebuilt our city hall, our Public Works, our fire department has been restructured and remodeled and we have a new library coming. So this is the last city facility that really might need some attention in the future and we don't plan on tearing it down or building a new one. So what we need then is somebody to come in and do a master site plan. And I think this is where, if we do get the grant funding for that, that the advisory board will have some work to do in helping us identify what that master plan looks like.
It's exciting. Number four was to reinstate and strengthen the partnership with the Gladstone School District on the community school program. There was a little bit of a hiatus during the pandemic and coming out of that, re-establishing this relationship with the community school program to enhance the, the activities that could be provided to the community at the, the center is, is something that we're, we're continuing to work on.
And as you know, you reapproved that agreement at your last meeting when we talked about the use of ARPA funds. Our partnership with the school district has really strengthened. We have a meeting in mid-July with staff from the community school programs and with our staff to talk about what classes are working well or what would we like to see in addition to, which is where I think, number one, on expanding the multi-generational classes, those two will coincide with each other moving forward. But we're very excited about our partnership. We haven't had that meeting in probably four or five years. So I think that working with the school district to strengthen what we're offering. And then also remember, we're trying to start our youth council this fall too and maybe getting their input in what those classes will look like at the center.
Anything down? That's it?
Just a couple of weeks ago, I watched the State of the City address for the city of West Lynn, which has a much higher tax base than Gladstone and a lot more park facilities because of that, but doesn't have a community center. And they're looking to begin the process of starting one. And so a community like that can be envious of, of a city that has a center where certain indoor recreational activities and support activities can take place. It certainly helped, you, you were very humble in not even mentioning the, the food distribution that goes on through your program. But that is one of the other great things, one of the great services that you're providing to the community. So we're grateful to you and I'm glad you're thinking ahead and, and thinking in new directions too. Comments and questions from city councilors? Councillor Garlington?
What is the amount of the grant that you're looking for, the, the site plan? What, what have you, what did you?
I think we asked for $50,000, but we asked for other amenities in that grant application too. Michelle, do you remember the total?
Yes, we also asked, our ADA doors are broken. And so we had also asked for those to be replaced. And then the, the master site plan as well, which I believe was the $50,000.
It was under $100,000 total and there's no match on this. And so we're, we're optimistic that we can hear back from the county that they will streamline funds through for that.
So you're looking, so if you, you're thinking that it could be upwards to $100,000 and you're hoping to get the 50 and then have come up with 50? Is that what?
No, I think what we asked for was just under $100,000, but the site plan I believe was for $50,000.
Okay. And thank you for that. And then when did you say the meeting with the school district was again?
We have one that we're trying to get set. I believe it's for July 12th.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
This is a fun group. I enjoy going to their advisory board meetings and they also hang out at the center. And if you haven't been there in a while, you should stop by because Metro even hosted a mixer there. And we are, cities are envious of what we have there and I appreciate you. And we are, cities are envious of what we have there, and I appreciate you saying that. But this past year, things are really starting to change, and it's a very vibrant atmosphere at the community center.
Yeah, I didn't want to brag too much. We do have a lot going on. It's amazing. It's an amazing place to work and the community. You see different people from all over the community really coming there, not only for resources, but our our food, our home delivered meal program, rentals, just hanging out, the socialization aspect of it. I had an 11-year-old little girl come in today and ask if she could just come in and play games. She didn't have any grandparents. I mean, touching things like this happen daily at the center, and it's just a magical place.
And is Wendy, the former principal at John Wetton, is she still overseeing a lot of that?
Wendy Wilson is amazing, yes. She is one of my top volunteers who heads up the food box program that we just currently moved over to the Gladstone Food Pantry. And she is, she she also helps immensely with the transportation of the coveted notebooks with the Pimpal program. So she knows all the teachers there, so she's able to get those notebooks in our food boxes, in our home delivered meal bags, and they write in them one week, and then we take them back the next week, and the kids look forward to writing back to their Pimpals. And then at the end of the year, they get to meet their Pimpal. And so it's just a really fantastic program all around, I think, not just for the kids or for the seniors, but for the kids, because these are people who who don't leave their homes. They are truly homebound seniors. And to have that interaction, a lot of them haven't had little grandkids in 40 years. So it it's beautiful.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
And it also, you have the luncheon learns, which are very informative and and well-attended also, too, for fraud and fire prevention and how to throw your, you know, just everything. So it's really informative. If you go to one of those, those are neat.
And that's how we try to get a lot of, you know, different community members in through these luncheon learns. And we've really been trying to step up our social media game lately. We had Clackamas Fire come in today and talk about fire season. And they, like Greg was saying, they are well-attended. We usually hold them on Tuesday. And, you know, it's not just, it's just all different resources that people can tap into in the community and, you know, learn something while they're eating.
Since I already copped to being of the generation that had metal merry-go-rounds at the playground, I'll admit, too, that I belong to AARP and get a lot of newsletters and emails from them. And they are a great resource for the kinds of things that a community can do, not only to serve its retired people, but, you know, the the social relationships among the whole community and addressing specific needs, concerns, like you said, like fraud, fire prevention, all those things that we sometimes don't think about but need to get educated on, because there's more and more of that. The other thing on social media I see is people saying, somebody call me and scam me about this, you know? Oh, Grandma, it's your grandson. I've been in jail. Please bail me out. Those kinds of things, they go on. So whatever you can, however you can teach people, however you can form relationships, to have people support one another and look out for each other, particularly with extreme weather events, it's good that you're building a good sense of community. So your work is greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I'd just like to give a shout out, too, to everybody that runs the center, because even though we changed the name from a senior center to a community center, no services for our senior population were altered. If anything, they were enhanced. And now they're bringing in more age groups into the center, and so increasing their workload, basically, and doing it with a smile on their face and being so grateful to be able to provide for the community. And I think they're amazing.
All right. Thanks to both of you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on our agenda is our planning commission. I see that planning commission chair Natalie Smith is here, and will Heather Austin be joining us on Zoom?
She's joining right now.
Very good.
Good evening, Mayor Milch and city councilors. Hello, Heather.
Hello, Chair Smith.
Hi, I'm probably just going to go ahead and touch on, these things are going to be definitely carrying over into 2025, where we're in the midst of all of them, and there's a lot to do. Let's start with the Gladstone Town Center. We received a $60,000 grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to establish a town center. And I do, it says down at the bottom that the stakeholder advisory committee has not been formed, but I do believe they're already meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I I saw that and just went, no, they're they're already meeting. I think they've had three or four meetings. Have you been attending those, Heather?
Yes, yeah. And my apologies, this this worksheet is from our goal setting in December that we brought forward for the beginning of the year. So as you go through, Chair Smith, I can throw in some dates where needed, too. But we have met twice with our stakeholder advisory committee at this point. And we're going to have a community meeting at the community center on August 15. So in the evening, we're planning to talk to anyone from the community who'd like to come learn about the project and and give some feedback on that.
Okay, that's wonderful. I wasn't aware of that, but that's great. So that's, and that is connected to several other things, especially with the climate-friendly and equitable communities. This is also going to be funded under the Town Center Project Grant. The city will need to update our parking requirements as a part of this initiative. Parking reform will apply to the areas of the city beyond a half a mile from McLaughlin Boulevard, where parking mandates have been removed due to proximity of the high-frequency transit service. And I believe you all saw the map. That means there won't be any requirements at all for any developments, new building, et cetera. So that's going to be, the climate-friendly initiative is going to be something we're going to be working with for quite a few years, I believe. Then we're going to be looking at rezoning, and I don't believe we've actually started this yet, Heather. The rezoning of Meldron Bar Park and Gladstone Nature Park?
We have on the staff side. We've been gathering the legal descriptions and preparing the public notices for those, because we do plan to bring those to you, Chair Smith, at the August Planning Commission meeting. So our notice to the state is required 35 days in advance of that, which will be in July. So that is in the works. And and if I can just pop back for the CFAC parking, we're aiming for September 17. So we haven't had planning commission the last two months, because we've had a really light development side and weren't ready for these long-range planning projects. But we're going to hit the planning commission hard, starting this month, next month, July. We have two development applications, but then in August, we'll be doing the nature park and Meldron Bar. And then in September, the CFAC parking reform starts. So we definitely are on track for those.
Okay. And throughout this year so far, I know that we've been working on a lot of the state mandated code updates. We've had some, quite a few changes regarding commercial buildings and residential use and a lot of design review criteria to see about similar languages and additional, you know, whether they're related to ADUs, et cetera, and permitting affordable housing in all commercial zones and permit childcare centers outright in the C1, C2, C3, OP and LI zones. Do you have anything to add to that, Heather?
Um, just that we are in touch with our DLCD representative, Kelly Reed, on a regular basis. She sends updates to us, alerting us to what other things we need to be on the lookout for as far as updating our code to stay in compliance with state law. And right now, this list is pretty inclusive of what we need to do, and our plan is to just meld these code changes in with the CFAC parking reform, since we're already opening the development code and bringing forward changes and noticing that and having an opportunity for public meetings. So that can also be expected at September 17, Planning Commission, October 8, City Council.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you for presenting that. Are there questions from councilors on these matters? Some, a lot of this will be coming to us at some point, but it's good to know that you're doing the groundwork for us, and the staff is supportive, even staff at the state level, to help us get through these. Some of these are requirements, some of these things are requirements that will also enhance the quality of our community a great deal. So we're doing them for a variety of reasons. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. On the Gladstone Town Center project, I I heard from a couple of people in the neighborhood who thought that this was going to be the beautification of downtown Gladstone, and apparently it is not what their expectation was. Enlighten me.
May I, may I respond?
Yeah, go ahead, Heather.
Thank you. Yes, so we did have a stakeholder advisory committee meeting last week where we demonstrated three different potential boundaries for the town center. And I think two of those boundaries went quite a bit beyond, you know, the Portland Avenue corridor, which brought up the question of what is the difference between a town center and a downtown or a Main Street? And so we were talking about how the town center is really a place where you can connect where people live to where they work and do their daily services and errands and potentially have the ability to do those things without using a car. So most town centers are much larger than what you'd consider a Main Street or a downtown, so that you can incorporate those living opportunities as well. So the example that was given by our Metro representative was Milwaukee. We all kind of have our idea of what Milwaukee downtown is, but the town center itself is really three miles wide, and it includes like the new new seasons. So a town center is really more in a larger area to encompass so that you can provide residences, jobs and services to potentially 10,000 people or more. So really, you know, we're getting close to the Gladstone town, city population when we talk about a true town center. We're not looking to include the whole city, of course, in our center, but it it probably would make sense to make it larger than the Portland Avenue corridor to include some residential opportunities, too.
Okay, Counselor Garlington, I I am guessing that when people signed up for the Town Center Advisory Committee, they thought it was something to do with the downtown revitalization plan, and that's probably what you're referring to. We are still doing the downtown revitalization plan. We'll be talking about it at your work session in July, because we're potentially expanding our urban renewal district to include Portland Avenue so that we can do beautification, but the town center is a completely different project.
Good, thank you.
And just on that point as well, we've already begun working on what we'll be presenting at the August 15 community meeting, and one of our main points will be what a town center is and what we're really looking to accomplish with this project, just to to address those issues, because we know that we weren't clear enough going into the second stakeholder advisory committee meeting.
Yeah, thanks. That that was basically my question is, is there a plan for some education about the difference between a downtown and a town center? Because I know that was very confusing at that last meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think if your goal is to develop a part of the city where you have more walkability, denser housing, then the smaller of an area that you designate to be that town center, the more dense the housing will have to be, and sometimes the taller the buildings will have to be in order to achieve that goal. Whereas if you spread it out over a wider area, you can still have proximity to some of basic services like grocery stores and parks and schools. And so one portion of your city can be designated to have that walkability and slightly higher density without having to jam it all in one very tight location. So I hope we get some good input from the community on how to how to make this work and the the best location for that to be. I'm I'm glad that we're working with staff to develop some options and to look at the the various pros and cons of each each option we have. Other questions or comments from councilors?
I'm just going to add one more little thing. I'm glad to see that we're going to be talking about the revitalization again in July, because it feels like we're putting the cart before the horse. And I understand that, you know, we want to add this larger area and call it a town center. But at the same time, that downtown corridor, they've been waiting a long time for us to come and help. And I know that we were talking about this. Okay, I'm going to take "we" out of this. The council was talking about this long before I ever got here, and we're still talking about it. So.
Well, the town center is a state mandate. That that came along separate from the downtown revitalization plan. And I think that's where the confusion is, is because people think that the city's taking on this whole new town center project now. And so we need to be clearer about what the state requirements are in relation to meeting the climate-friendly and equitable communities piece of that.
Right. No, I do understand that, but I'm just making the comment that I'm glad that we're not dropping the ball on the downtown revitalization, because I believe that needs to happen in order to pave the way for the rest of it, really, just to say, you know?
Yeah, I think the downtown needs to be a key component of of the of the town center.
Yeah.
And perhaps some of the other commercial districts in Gladstone also will have a play a big role in that, because they, some of the other parts of the city feature amenities that aren't there in our downtown. Yeah, COVID did a number on a lot of projects in this city. The library got postponed, and looking to the library to be sort of an anchor of our downtown meant that, you know, we kind of postponed a lot of what we did in the in the downtown for commercial development until we were sure the library was underway. And so, yeah, I think there were comments at the stakeholders' meeting that some of what we had talked about and envisioned back in 2017, when we when we adopted the the downtown revitalization, is not what's been talked about lately. But, you know, the the need for meeting our, some of our housing needs analysis goals and other things made us put a bigger emphasis on housing in downtown than we had. And that was a lot of the changes that we adopted in our in our development code in the last year or two. So it's it's all very incremental in cities. Someone made a comment. Well, you know, you hear this a lot. Whenever this piece of property opens up, somebody will say, gee, the city ought to get Trader Joe's in there, as though the city has any choice in the matter. You know, it it doesn't always work that way. And people commented about McLaughlin and all the car dealerships, the city should really clean that up. You know, well, there's only certain things that the city has control over, but we can kind of set the table and make it possible for development to happen. And by designing and thinking proactively, that's part of the planning commission's goals, goal. And they are used to doing that. They they hear from developers, they talk to developers when projects are coming. So they're the folks that are really helping us look proactively at this kind of design and down to 10, 20, 30 years into the future. And there will still be lots of neighborhoods in Gladstone that will be primarily single-family homes. And we're seeing other neighborhoods that are currently older, single-family homes that people are starting to redevelop and look in other ways, so that those incremental changes continue to happen. And and I'm, I I want to say how appreciative I am of Heather and her staff helping us with a lot of this, because it's something that was hard for us to do more than a few years ago, which is another reason why some of those projects got put off a little bit. But we made it a priority, and now we're seeing the results. So, thank you, Natalie.
I would like to make note of the fact that, other than the rezoning of Meldron Bar Park and the Gladstone Nature Park, these, the other things we've been working on for the last two years are all state mandated. So, and we will, we continue to peel back the layers of the onions, you know, and and everything that comes before us, we have to keep this into consideration, especially with the climate-friendly state requirements. So we have our, we have our tasks at hand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The last on our agenda is to hear from our Traffic Safety Advisory Board. And newly elected chair, John Kilstrom, is here tonight. Vice Chair Tim Large is here, and Police Chief John Schmerber is the staff representative of that. So Chief Schmerber will stay at his chair on the on the staff table, and John and Tim, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. One of our things is that we participate in community events, and the bicycle rodeo has been held. And we had, I'm not sure the person that came, but they brought a trailer full of bicycles that kids could ride around and try different sizes and would fix bikes and do all this. And then we did the helmets, and we awarded two bicycles that were given away for a coloring contest. So it was a, it was positive for for the thing, and there were marks out in the pavement. And there were marks out in the pavement where if you brought your bike, you could have ridden around and tried to get through the cones and things. Then we had the shred event and that was, uh, where a lot of, a lot of cars lined up to bring all their paper and other things that could be shredded. Kracksberger, um, the robotic group was here. They collected all kinds of, uh, electronics and other miscellaneous metal that they could claim and reuse in some way or, or sell it for, for salvage. And then a part of that day also was the drug takeback where people brought in unwanted expired prescriptions or any other type of drug stuff. And that got then sent back to Indiana for proper disposal. Coming up, we have the Fourth of July barbecue where the chiefs of the fire department and the police department will be cooking hot dogs and the traffic, uh, people will be slapping the dogs in the buns and whatever is necessary. Heard there might also be snow cones there, not, not totally sure, but that, looking forward to that. The community festival, August 2nd and 3rd. We'll be staffing the traffic booths there across those days. And, uh, just controlling the, the group and making sure to see that everything is, is flowing and whatever is necessary. Also, there will be the Halloween event, uh, on October 31st, uh, that's down Portland Avenue. And we'll have to have a pile of candy for, for that group because the kids will be with their little baskets, just going from place to place to place and then back again. Other things that we participate in as we promote the safety with brochures, the bike helmets, fittings, giveaways, car seat installation appointments and more. So we promote and participate in the bike helmet, helmet program. In the car seat. I think in, in your packets you get how many, you know, car seats have been tested, bicycle helmets have been passed out. One of the other items we're looking forward to doing is bringing a Gladstone High School student on as a liaison. And that will probably, that will take place when the school starts again. We will try and, and get someone to come on board to be a participant in this. Tim Large and, uh, and we'll be working with Chief on collecting information for red lights, photo speed tolling issues. Although tolling has been placed on hold, the possibility of, of it is still, still out there. And if it does, it's going to push traffic into town. Not quite sure how it would go because it's the bridge, but where are they, you know? Again, more West Lynn and Oregon City are going to take the brunt of it, but people will still, if the streets backed up, if 205s backed up, you see it now, they're, they're coming down Ruth Road and the, you know, Webster and cutting through, trying to get, get where they can get. So Tim will be working the chief on that. The transportation safety plan, Nathan Page and Carleen Cox will be reviewing that plan and making recommendations to the council. The plan is, I think was 2017 is when that was done, passed. It's very comprehensive. There's a lot of information in there that, items that we talked about at the traffic that we've noted, if you go through the book, it's in there. I mean, there's a lot of this, a lot of this there. It's just a matter of the monies that are on there, I'm sure are now double or triple what it was quoted back, back then to fix some of this stuff. Nathan Page and Carleen Cox will also be participating in the city traffic development related to the downtown revitalization and probably also the, um, town center. It'll be, because there's parking and stuff involved in that. The group participates in a monthly newsletter. I've been submitting something to, to get in there. And I know Yvonne puts, puts stuff in there that she gets from the state also so that there's a reminder in each newsletter of safety around traffic pedestrians, bicycles, workers on the road, all these types of things. One thing that wasn't on your list, we've talked about a couple of times. The chief and the Public Works are working on looking at striping on Dartmouth to narrow the traffic lanes perception to slow down traffic coming down Dartmouth. I also think put chevrons with a 25 mile per hour when you hit that road. Gives people a heads up as to what the expectations are on that road because it's downhill and people want to zip down that way.
Any comments, questions or concerns? I'll just add, because I was on the city council, I think when we adopted it, that, that what you call a transportation safety plan, actually the transportation system plan, which looks at the whole system of roads and, and means of transportation, including sidewalks and other things. But safety is a big component of that. And I'm glad that you're thinking, uh, about your role in, uh, and where we could enforce the rules, perhaps change speed limits, is that it? Or change the engineering of roads with striping and other things that will make them safer? Because all of those things work together to, um, you know, enhance, uh, the safety of what we do. So, uh, we appreciate your work. I'm, I'm glad you have a wide scope of things. Over the years, I'm not sure if, you know, we've gone through, uh, this committee thinking its role was primarily limited just to educating the public. And I'm glad that we're broadening the scope of that work to really take a, kind of an ongoing look at our whole transportation system and, um, and, and how it affects, uh, safety and mobility and accessibility within our community.
Yes, we're reviewing accident data to understand where, where, what, why, who, you know, ages of the people involved, et cetera, so that we can see if there's any areas that need to have focus on, on them. So.
I, I know that this week, because of a Public Works, well, not our local Public Works, but a Public Works related project, uh, the last little block of Arlington Street coming up to McLaughlin has been closed. And I'm curious to see what feedback we get from the community and how that impacted things. Because that has been a problematic intersection for a long time. And maybe we'll discover that, you know, it's not as important to our local drivers as we thought it was. I, we have a counselor who lives on our, I think she may disagree with me, but I just, I'm just saying, we have these opportunities to kind of look into things and, and see what, what possible changes and modifications will improve our safety. Are there questions from, uh, councilors?
Yeah, I have a comment and a question, about one of each. Um, the first one, I think education in the newsletter is a fantastic idea. There was a discussion, you know, everybody's in the neighborhood groups on Facebook. There was a discussion a couple of months back where, um, people were talking about the lack of stop signs in lower Gladstone. And heck, if you read through the comments, people are like, oh no, everybody knows that north, south traffic always yields to east, west. So if you're going east, west, you can just go right through an intersection, like Chief Schmerber. It's the.
The first one there gets to go.
The, the ideas that people had around traffic safety and the assumptions that we make. Because heck, when was the last time, you know, if you got your driver's license, you took a written test, you know, how many years ago? Um, I, I think having, uh, the Traffic Safety Board contribute to the newsletter with these reminders of traffic safety, I think is a fantastic idea. So that's my comment and my question, um, maybe more for staff. And I feel like I heard about a project and this was years and years ago, definitely pre pandemic, pandemic, about the 99E crossing of Trolley Trail. So the Trolley Trail crosses 99E, which obviously is ODOT, but it is a problematic crossing. A lot of families ride their bikes up and down the Trolley Trail and then navigating, especially children with bicycles or pedestrians across 99E can be problematic. I don't know if I read, I don't know if I had a dream about it or something that it was like some sort of project to enhance safety on that crossing. I don't know if that's ringing any bells.
It has, from my observations, been enhanced that, um, the state, they have where you can go, you know, not just this way and that way, but I think also, but they've also delayed the stoplights. So that if you're on Jennings and want to go across, when you hit that, you'll get the, you'll get the green light to walk, but the traffic does not get a green light to start moving across. So you have a clear path across. They've done that on most of the lights along, along McLaughlin.
That is.
Which seems to have cut down. I noticed, uh, when I first was on the board, the accident rate at McLaughlin and Gloucester was real high. And since they've done that, it's dropped quite a bit. There was only like one on the last report.
Yeah.
On that one. So the state is looking at that, I think.
I feel like there were some infrastructure improvements on the docket at one point, but am I making that up?
Um, not within our city. There were, they, they put the flashing lights, uh, at crosswalks, um, farther north on McLaughlin.
Yeah.
And, and where, and where the Trolley Trail crosses is actually out of the city limits as well. But I don't know if they were adding, um, well, the infrastructure improvement would be the timing of the, of the walk light, I think.
Okay, cool. All right. I'll go back to wishing and hoping.
They did put in two, two flashing crosswalks, one north of Jennings, one south of Jennings. Because people were getting hit crossing the roads there.
Yeah, it's, uh, McLaughlin is one of those boulevards that, uh, isn't really a street, isn't really a, a freeway, but people want it to be both. And it's really hard to, uh, to keep it safe when, when you, when you got a lot of driveways to go in and out of and businesses. And yet people want to go 35 or 40. So I appreciate you monitoring.
Fifty.
Well, yes, I, I live close enough to hear the drag racers too, who started Glen Echo and go downhill to Gloucester. Uh, and, and, you know, they think of it as a quarter mile drag strip. Thank you so much for monitoring those kinds of things and, and seeing it as, as part of the scope of what you do. It's good to have broad community representation. We hope you'll be able to get a high school student, uh, with you to help in that education role and get that feedback from how young people see things too.
And we need two more members if you know somebody wants to volunteer.
One of them got promoted. Yes.
So my one comment is I was really excited to see that the traffic board has taken it upon themselves to expand what, uh, their visual, their vision or their visibility is what I'm looking for, I'm sorry, in, in, in our community. I just really like this. Thank you for going that extra mile and doing all this fun stuff that you do. I wanted to ask you about the system plan. How old is it and when do we have to go back after a new one?
2026.
And how much is that?
I don't have a cost estimate for that, but DLCD or the state will have some funding to help offset the cost to update that.
Okay, and you said 2026. And then, um, the, the number four, I'm assuming this was, uh, prior to our meeting last month as, uh, Traffic Safety Board Member Vlog is now a counselor. So I said it wrong, I'm sorry. Say it again.
Loud.
Loud, I will remember that. O U G. Okay. The, the red light and the speed cameras. How many, uh, talk to us about that and some costs related to that? What does it cost to put up a, uh, speed camera? How many are you looking to have new ones maybe or what?
We, we will have those answers. We have a meeting scheduled for Monday to talk about what the scope is going to be, what the priority of the intersections based on traffic crashes, based on other things. Originally, uh, conversations came up when tolling was, was being considered. So we've been talking about it for a couple of years now. But what's right, what's the right fit for Gladstone is what we're going to be looking at. So we don't have the answers to that. Tim Large and I, we're going to be meeting, um, on Monday to, to kind of get a scope and get some recommendations, take it before the, the rest of the traffic committee. And then, um, bring some recommendations hopefully forward at some point to the council.
Okay, so you are, you, you're. Is it safe to say that your group is trying to maybe put some more of those in place for our community? The, the, uh, speed cameras and the?
Well, we don't have anything, we currently don't have anything in place.
Okay.
We have a, we have a, you know, a, a, a speed trailer, but we don't have something that, um, such as, you'll notice a lot of places, uh, city of Beaverton, city of Sherwood, you know, they have photo red light on, on their 99 or whatever streets they have. If we're having problems with crashes, you know, maybe Arlington and 99 is, is a great place for people to stop running red lights, right? Or Gloucester and 99. So you want to be strategic about the areas that you're putting at for safety reasons.
I guess I was thinking more of the, the, like the speed can, the speed, here's how fast you're going. I thought that's maybe you were looking to put more of those, like the one on Glen Echo, because I pass.
Oh, the, uh, the, the, yeah, the, the speed signs.
Yeah.
Or slowdown signs. We, we can look at that also.
Do you find those help?
Yes, I find it all helps. Like, uh, even the, the engineering of stripings, like we're talking about on, on Dartmouth, shrinking everything, every, everything helps.
Good, thank you. I appreciate the information.
The, uh, traffic plan, that big thick book if you print it out, there's a lot of good information in there. And we probably should kind of look at some of that to see, pick some of the low hanging fruit off of that and implement it. I mean, there's, um, up at Sherwood, and the chief mentioned it, that there's no crosswalk going across the Sherwood on Jennings up there. It's in the plan. It's, it's all, all that stuff is mentioned. If you don't find it in pedestrian, you'll find it in bicycle. It's, it's there.
It all comes down to money.
Yes, I know. Money, 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 money.
Counselor Huckabee?
Thank you. I just wanted to give a shout out and kudos to this committee. Since I've joined as the liaison, the committee has become more productive, engaged and organized. And it's really starting to make an impact in our community. So I really appreciate your guys' time.
All right. Thank you very much. We have, um, on our agenda tonight, upcoming meeting dates. We'll have our regular city council meeting on July 9th. Another work session on July 2030. You indicated some of the topics we'll be doing, uh, looking at. And, uh, after that work session, we will also convene as the Urban Renewal Agency. So we've got plenty to do in July. Hopefully things will slow down a little bit in August, uh, so we can go to the festival and have some personal time. So I think that's all we have for tonight. One more item from Counselor.
Can I just give a quick shout out?
Sure.
Um, the Gladstone Minor American third and fourth grade baseball team has requested us to come out and support them at Derrick's Field this Thursday night at 6:00 PM. So I hope we'll see a lot of people there.
Okay, I won't go into the reasons why they want us there, but yeah. But, uh, yeah, it'll be fun. Always want to support a, a local team. All right.
They're doing great, winning, winning, winning.
All right, I think that's all we have. So, uh, we are adjourned at, uh, seven, oh, six, 37.